Good evening, everyone, and welcome. The regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, and the time is now 7:02 PM. Board of Trustees present our trustee Adams, trustee Hodges, trustee Durant, trustee Jensen, and trustee Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask our vice president and chair of our Equity Committee to read the Spring ISD Equity Statement, trustee Adams.
Thank you, President Durant. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students, with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Excuse me. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Next, tonight's presentation of colors will be led by the Carl Winchey Senior High School Honor Guard. The pledge will be led by chief Carolyn Montana. The honor guard member carrying the U.S. flag is Madeline Ray. Carrying the Texas flag is Melissa Sanchez. Left rifle is Andrea Galvin. Right rifle is Leila Mendez. The Carl Winchey Senior High School Honor Guard is led by instructor Wayland Randolph, Edward Price, Raymond Hernandez, and Lentia Collins. At this time, I would ask if everyone could please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Honor guard, attention! Right face. Forward march. Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Honor guard, hold! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. Honor guard, forward march. Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Honor guard, dismount!
I'd like to ask if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence that you can observe in your own way. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Our next item is the superintendent remarks, so we will now hear from our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lupita Inahosa.
Thank you, Mr. Durant, members of the board, senior leadership, and all of our families, guests, community members that are here today. First and foremost, as Mr. Durant said, you know, I am the super proud superintendent. Did you just notice an all-female color guard? So let's hear it for the girls! Just special congratulations to our Carl Winchey Senior High School troop that was just here, an all-female color guard that presented. And those are the things that make us so very proud to be able to showcase our young scholars. And tonight, I know our board will be recognizing other scholars that are here tonight, so for you just to get a taste of all the amazing things our students do every single day. And they do this because of our amazing teachers that we have, our school leaders that support our students to ensure that they're having an opportunity to succeed and to lead. And so today, yes, lots of great comments, but especially just reminders for everyone. We are doing our pre-K roundup. Just another shout-out, please go to our website, www.springisd-prekay. Take a look at all the opportunities that our students have when they come to our free, no tuition required, pre-K, all-day pre-K. You're going to see an amazing video that our communications team put together. It's a compilation of all the great opportunities that our four-year-olds have in Spring ISD. Also, I think we talked about it last week, but just a quick reminder for all of our young men, all of our male students, we are hosting our Boys Empowerment Summit at Decane, and it's only, what is it, two weekends away, April 22nd. So I know we have administrators and teachers here, please make sure that you've shared that information. It's an amazing day that culminates with an experience of coming together and sharing lunch and being able to learn how to do this in following all your etiquettes, your manners, but after having spent an entire morning talking about things like college readiness and developing your self-concept and how do you make friends and how do you, you know, call out when there's bullying happening and social media, how to be very intelligent consumers of the social media that's out there. So for all of our young men or parents that are here, teachers that are here, it's April 22nd. Also want to do a big shout-out and, you know, early thank you to all of our volunteers. We will be celebrating National Volunteer Week, and that's April 22nd through the 26th. So look out for all the social media out there, communications that we will be putting out there, but from our board, from our administration, want to do a special thanks to all the volunteers that come day in and day out to support our students in person as well as online. So keep that top of mind. And then last but not least, this weekend is our Spring Tri-Club Show, and it is this weekend. I know you've heard us, you've heard me talking about it. This is the time where our students get to showcase their projects. Their projects may be their horticulture, the plants they've been growing, but what you're going to see is lots of animals. Our students have spent an entire year raising their animals, learning how to be responsible, how to take care of these animals, and we culminate with an auction on Saturday at 11:30. So if you haven't already done so, please again, visit our website, www.springisd.org/stampede. We are collecting donations as we will bid for the students' animals. The students will receive this money for either the continuation of a project for next year and/or to use to go to college. So please visit our website. Lots of exciting things that are happening here in Spring ISD, and if you haven't already done so, please sign up to receive our blogs and stay current with us. Mr. Durant, that concludes my announcements, and just a special thanks to all of our staff. I see lots of staff members here that are supporting their students as they come and receive their awards, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Our next item is I would like to ask any of my colleagues or trustees who would like to make any remarks at this time.
Madam President, I had an opportunity to judge at the capstone presentations at Winchey High School. Our seniors are doing awesome work. I was surprised at the various, I guess, discoveries of where they are going in their particular careers and the opportunities that they are looking forward to. I only did present, did judging in the veterinary science area, and to understand what our females are doing in veterinary science was quite surprising to me, but thank you to the judges from our community, our businesses and partnerships that we have with various companies, they came together for the students. We thought we were going to be short of judges, but that morning, they all came in, and I want to give a big shout-out and thank you to our community for supporting the seniors at Winchey High School for their capstone project. And also, I'd like to echo Dr. Inahosa's talk about the Boys Summit. We're going to have just as much fun at the Boys Summit as we did the Girls Summit, because we're going to have an etiquette presentation for the boys, Dr. Inahosa, and they are going to learn table etiquette, they are going to learn about getting ready to treat a young lady for prom that's coming up, and various other social activities that they will be engaged in. So please recommend your son to attend the Boys Summit on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Newhouse.
Madam President, forgive me, I'm a little froggy this evening, but I did want to mention that I also attended the Girls Summit.
Yes, you did!
Took my two daughters over, and they really got value, and what surprised me was my seventh-grade daughter actually asked to go. That kind of surprised me, so I want to put in that plug for the Girls Summit and the Young Men Summit. It was well-attended. I also had an opportunity to attend a couple of PVA performances. I went over and I saw the Spring High School Choral Performance a few weeks ago. It was phenomenal, really talented artists there. And then I also attended the Decane Preview, I believe it was their UIH show, also extremely talented, very impressive musicians, among them, Dr. Jensen's grandson, so met his, met her family. And so the thing I wanted to comment on though was how well-attended these events are and how much I appreciate the support from families and communities. And I know we come out for football and we come out for the big sports, but the kids really appreciate when we show up at their events. I had one of the dance team coaches talk about how, you know, we really need to get out and support all the other, you know, not-so-big sports, so I want to encourage us and the community to get out, support the dance teams, the cheerleading squads, everybody, all the kids that are putting in the really hard work to make Spring a great place to be. Thank you.
And I just wanted to echo the sentiments of trustee Adams. I had an opportunity to attend the Girls Summit, and it was very well-attended, and the enthusiasm of the young ladies is what I really enjoyed, especially from the opening presentation, going to some of the sessions and just sitting in, and especially Rhonda, trustee Newhouse's presentation on etiquette, and the girls were really, really engaged and interested. They had their notepads, they were taking notes, and I think that part is, you know, very exciting to know that the girls are there because they want to be. And again, as trustee Adams said, we want to encourage the community to get engaged and get involved, and thank you to those who are already involved, but we would always love to have standing room only, so thank you all so much.
I just wanted to urge everybody to see those science projects out there in the hall. They are just awesome. There is one young woman who has a engineering one of a artificial prosthetic hand, and she has gone through the engineering design process. There is another one that is modeling teeth with eggs, which are calcium carbonate, and I just thought that was really a well-done thing. They were all very, very interesting, so, and it's right out there in the hall, so when you exit or take a break, please go and look at those projects.
Madam President, I have to give one other shout-out. Spring High School Girls softball team, coach Warwick received an honor for 500 wins. And we had a nice crowd, so hats off to her. Our girls are winning the district, and I got a chance to throw out the first pitch, and I got it across the plate! So, but it was great to see them win that night and for a coach to receive that honor. 500 wins, that's quite a few. Congratulations to her.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I want to take a moment just to remind everyone that our legislators are currently in session, and there are a lot of bills that are on the floor in this session that is going to impact public education. And for your legislators, your elected officials, to hear from you, from parents and community members, it carries a lot of weight, and so always take that opportunity to send them an email or write them a letter to let them know how you feel. I also want to talk about how very proud I am of the board that I serve with and the trustees that you have elected to represent you have done a phenomenal job in advocating for spring. They've gone all the way to Washington, D.C., and met with our legislators there as well as those in Austin to advocate for our kids here in Spring ISD, and we will continue to do that. There is a bill on the floor addressing vouchers tomorrow, so it'll be a good time for you to go out and let your voices be heard. So thank you, everyone, and thank you to my colleagues for all of our hard work in being advocacy champions for the students in Spring ISD.
May I just add that if you don't feel comfortable contacting your legislator and you may not know your legislator, there's an organization called Stand Up Texas and Raise Your Hand Texas, I'm sorry. Raise Your Hand Texas. And they really have a nice website. It's not Democratic or Republican, it's issue-oriented, and it's the issues that parents care about, so raise your hand, raise your hand, Texas.
Raise your hand, Texas! All right, I'd also like to announce for the record that trustee Correa joined us at 7:09 PM, and trustee Natasha McDaniel, who is under the weather, is actually online, so we see you, Natasha. All right, so our next item is one of the best parts of the meeting, and that is recognition. So at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join me in the horseshoe.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Inahosa, administration, and audience. We begin tonight with a spotlight recognition for all of the Spring ISD scholars who excelled during the recent District Science Fair held at Robertson Elementary Middle School earlier this semester. District Science Fair winners went on to take nine projects to the Science and Engineering Fair in Houston, a regional event held at the George Brown Convention Center in February. The journey to becoming District Science Fair winners began during the fall semester as students identified topics for research, conducted experiments, and showcased projects at the campus level, some of which you will see outside. Following campus science fair competitions, the top three entries from each school moved on to the district fair for a final round of judging in categories that range from aerospace engineering and behavioral sciences to environmental science, engineering, physics, astronomy, and much, much more. We're proud of all of our students who took part in this year's District Science Fair event, and we would like to congratulate the following students here tonight representing our district winners, beginning with Wells Middle School, Caroline Zamaripa. From Robertson Middle School, Geraldine Seritos. From Robertson Middle School, Itzel Mendoza. From Clatten Middle School, Alma Kumba. From Quinn Creek's Middle School, Kaylee Walker. And from Duitt Middle School, Joel Hernandez. And finally, from Quinn Creek's Middle School, we have Naveya Carrasco, whose biomedical engineering project was awarded the Jacob Science Explorer Award during the regional event. Let's give a round of applause. Once again, let's give a big hand to all of our winners this evening.
On behalf of the board, I'd just like to say congratulations. We're so very proud of you. We want to get a picture, but also we want to recognize any of your parents or siblings that are here this evening. Please stand. Congratulations, students!
Good evening, everyone. Hi!
How's it going, guys? All smiles, hang on.
Mom, she can come on up and make a picture.
We do, guys, on three. Two, three.
Come on, let's just cast.
I'm up here, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we'd like to shine a spotlight on the Spring ISD elementary and middle school students who competed in this year's District Spelling Bee in February. In all, 22 elementary and eight middle school campus champions came together at Decane High School to compete for the top district prize. The district event showcased our amazing competitors as they battled through more than 10 rounds of competition. The top winner, who we would like to recognize tonight, unfortunately is unable to be with us, from Hirsch Elementary, fourth grader William Hedandades, who correctly spelled the word "top gallant" to secure the championship. Oh, he showed up? Oh, he is! All right! All right. Hedandades went on to represent Spring ISD in March at the Houston Public Media Regional Spelling Bee, which featured district champions from across the greater Houston area. We'd also like to extend congratulations to the runner-up Bailey Middle School sixth grader Mark Patterson. Let's give Mark a round of applause. Thanks to all the teachers and sponsors who made this year's Spring ISD Spelling Bee possible, and congratulations to William for winning the district event and representing Hirsch and Spring ISD at the Regional Spelling Bee. All right, as part of our Women's History Month celebration in March, students were invited to participate in the She persisted essay contest. Based in part on the children's book, She persisted: 13 American Women Who Changed the World. Students wrote about a woman of their choice who changed the world and who had a powerful impact on them personally. Winners from each category are receiving a trophy and a Kindle tablet to continue their journey of reading and learning, and we're excited to have several of our winners with us here tonight. Beginning with our pre-K through second grade category, our Spanish winner, Lada Farmer, from first grader at Booker Elementary. And our English winner, second grader from McNabb, Ana Rodriguez. And moving on to our third through fifth grade category, our Spanish winner, fourth grader from Anderson, Brianna Vetta. And our English winner, fourth grade from Booker, Naya Lawrence. And now for our sixth, we hope that we're going to pick a big photo over here in a second. Moving on to our next category, sixth through eighth grade category, English winner, Sanaya Cabaro, eighth grader for the School of International Studies at BAMM. Sanaya actually wrote her essay on a very inspiring contemporary woman, our very own superintendent, Dr. Lupita Inahosa. Our winner in the ninth through 12th grade category had a conflict tonight and was at a campus event, but we still wanted to give a shout-out to Westfield senior Monya Naiyo, together with Westfield's library media specialist, Tanya Dixon. Let's give them a round of applause. Our library media specialist helped coordinate the contest and provided resources to help students in writing their essays. With us tonight, we have Angela Galler from Booker Elementary. With us tonight, we have Angela Galler from Booker Elementary, Kristi Contreras from Anderson Elementary, Leslie Cuevas from McNabb Elementary, and Melanie Williams from the School for International Studies at BAMM. Thank you, and congratulations to all of our students. Okay, we're going to look at the big camera.
Right here, guys.
For archives here, everyone look at the big camera.
All right, very nice, right here, guys. Right here on three, one, two, three.
We're good, we're good. Just checking.
And I want to recognize all the parents, if you can stand up fully.
Okay, and now, tonight, we'd like to take a moment to highlight the award-winning work of our state and nationally recognized Spring ISD Communications Department. The department recently won 37 Star Awards from the Texas Public School Association for excellence in school communications during the 2021-2022 school year. The honors included two crystal award finalist entries, one for video portfolio and one for photography portfolio, and three Best of Category awards. In all this year, the department earned 20 Gold Stars, 14 Silver Stars, and one Bronze Star. According to the Chief of Communications for Spring ISD, they are the best communications team in the state of Texas. So, we're grateful for all the work our Communications Department does to keep our community informed and to celebrate the achievements of our students, our staff, and our schools. Congratulations to the communications team on earning these awards. Thank you for all that you do to support our district and our students. Representing comms tonight, our Assistant Superintendent of Communications Sarah Butler, Director of Communications Kristin Cobb. And behind the camera, Creative Services Coordinator Jim Weinman.
And our Chief of Communications, Dr. Truwar.
A dabble. Yeah, three, one, two, three. I need Jim, I need you to tighten in a little bit. All right, we'll be on three, one, two, three.
And now, for our last recognition for tonight, is a very special point of pride for our very own Superintendent Dr. Lupita Inahosa, whose award-winning work was recently honored at the national level. Near the end of last semester, Dr. Inahosa was officially selected as a 2022 Superintendent to Watch by the National Public Relations Association. With over 13,000 superintendents across the nation, she was one of just 24 selected this year in recognition of their innovative and effective use of communications and communication technology to engage and inform the school community. While she values newer communication technologies like the Let's Talk Online Communication Platform and our new digital assistant Sunny, Dr. Inahosa was also recognized for emphasizing the value of face-to-face engagement with the community. We couldn't be more proud of her for this accomplishment, and it's no secret to those of us in Spring ISD that she is without a doubt a superintendent to watch. Congratulations, Dr. Inahosa, from all of us in Spring ISD, who see the hard work you do every day to commit to your effectiveness.
I want to say on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we are very proud and very blessed and grateful to have you leading the ship here in Spring ISD, and you are definitely the Superintendent to Watch. We already knew that, but now everyone else out of the 1,300 other districts know it as well. Congratulations, and I have something for you.
I want to say something. First and foremost, thank you to our board, to my board, for your unending support and, you know, taking me on this journey. It is amazing, and, you know, I kid all the time saying I'm just super proud superintendent, but I am. I mean, look at our amazing 34,000 students. We've got over 5,200 employees. Now, I see Mr. Jackson sitting proud, one of our assistant principals. I'll tell you, I saw him early this morning going to check on the crossing guard, right? Because she wasn't there this morning. As I drive every morning, you know, you get to see our staff and the commitment to the work. And so, special thanks to our communications team, you know, as we started this journey, all the work that we wanted to put forth, that I know our community needs, and not to forget that face-to-face communication, because that's how we build relationships. That's how we build our spring as a family. That's who we are. And so, to all of our 5,200 employees, our 34,000 students, this is an acknowledgement of Spring ISD. And special thanks to our team, my team, our senior leadership team, for all that you do, supporting and holding me up. This is for you all. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you. I've never walked those horseshoes, so I want to walk them. And to Ms. McDaniel, I know you're watching, as this is for you too.
We need a group shot. Here we go. Sorry.
Our next item this evening is Agenda Participation. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, not for Agenda Participation.
Okay. Then our next item is Public Participation. Has anyone signed up for Public Participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have one speaker signed up. Before I invite our speaker to the podium, I need to read a short paragraph. The Board invites interested citizens to address the Board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any Board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The Board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the Board, and we welcome your participation. The Board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the Board infringes on the guidelines as stated previously or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Schaeffer will keep time, which will be displayed up on the monitors. According to law, the Board may not take action on any item that is not on the agenda. The Board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replying. The Board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the Board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear you now. Our first and only speaker tonight is Thomas Osuna to speak on vouchers. Mr. Osuna, if you will come to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Thomas Osuna. I'm a bilingual elementary school teacher for 15 years and also a member of the Spring AFD Organizing Committee. So, dear Spring School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Inahosa, as you are aware, educational issues are in the forefront of priorities for the 88th legislature, and there are many bills that we believe make a significant impact on our public schools. Bills such as House Bill 619, House Bills 3781, House Bill 4340, House Bill 4809, 4969 will siphon money from public schools into private school vouchers with no accountability or transparency. We believe these bills would take vital money away from our public schools when they are needed the most. As someone who works in Spring ISD and cares deeply about our neighborhood schools, we ask you to oppose these bills and any such voucher in the future and adopt the following resolution, which I'll hand over. And our Spring AFD Chairperson Yolanda Merritt also presented today to the House Public Education Committee in Austin today. She also strongly opposes the school voucher bill. Well, thank you very much for your time and service for our community, and I look forward to hearing from you and working with you on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and speaking with us this evening. Thank you very much.
We have no other speakers registered tonight?
Thank you. So for our next item this evening, I'd like to recognize our Chief Operation Officer, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Durant, Superintendent Inahosa, members of the Board. I'm on page 22 of your binder, and I'm going to share my screen. I will be giving an update on timelines for the bond. Just to give you an idea, for the Board, there was an update in the March 31st Board Updates that provides additional information on bond progress made to date. This presentation will give you an update on the architect and construction timeline. And so, the RFQ, just for those to be reminded, stands for Request for Qualifications. So when you see that throughout this, you'll be thinking Request for Qualifications. Per the Texas Government Code and Spring ISD policy, all professional services selections are based on qualifications. And so, I'm going to walk through the timeline this year through quarters. So, our first quarter of this year has concentrated in the architects and the contractor timeline has concentrated on review of the Request for Qualifications. In January, we approved the auditor, and you'll see her in just a few minutes, and she has done a review or completed a review of the RFQs, and we'll talk to you about that shortly. For quarter two, we hope to be advertising our Request for Qualifications for the architects. At the end of quarter two, we'll be able to present and advertise the construction proposal for the first set of contractors that we'll be looking for. In quarter three, we'll be bringing those architect qualifications forward to the Board for approval once we've done that, and we will also, at the end of quarter three, be bringing the first set of contractors to the Board. If this timeline works out the way we hope it to, we'll be very excited in quarter four to be able to present the first schematic designs for Epic and Spring High School later this year. And to give you a little more detail, the Architectural RFQ is for all of our architects. There are actually four of those RFQs that'll be going out to Spring. One for Spring High School, one for Epic, one for projects $15 million and over, and another pool for projects $15 million and under. The Architectural Services are included there. It's facilities planning, architectural services, programming, design, construction, documentation, and construction administration. Our original dates for these, we were hoping to be able to come back for Board approval in March. Our new dates for these, our revised dates for these, we'll be able to come back to the Board for those approvals in August, and you'll see the process here in just a second. And so, back on November 28th, in a special call session, Sarah Langue from Spalding, Nichols, Lamb, and Langue presented this process that I'm about to show you to the Board in detail, right? And so, in that meeting, the Board did request to add a review of the RFQs by our external auditor and our school board, and so we are in compliance with that. Last month, in March, RL Townsend and Associates was selected as the vendor for bond auditing, and with us this evening is Ms. Debbie Townsend to report to you concerning her review of the Spring ISD Request for Qualifications. So I'll ask at this time for Ms. Townsend to come to the podium.
Good evening, and congratulations on all your successes. That's pretty impressive. So I'm Debbie Townsend, President of RL Townsend. I'm very thrilled that we were selected to work on this bond campaign in construction. The first task we have taken on was the RFQ process, and all we, I mean, it's a pretty small part of it, reviewing the RFQ for the architect. So that's a, RFQ is a pretty standardized, you know, document. We actually went out to a variety of different organizations and obtained some others, compared yours with others, very similar, the questions that we'll be asking, you know, references and prior experience, et cetera. And I, anyway, it passed the test. So we had, you know, one minor recommendation, which was very, you know, not very significant at all. But, so anyway, I think that that part is good. The RFQ itself is though the document that goes out to be completed. What, to me, the risk and the things that you might be interested in is the selection process, and that's really the area where you need to have the right people. process, and that's really the area where you need to have the right people involved. And right now, I don't know what your process is, but I will be, you know, looking into that or getting involved in that at some point. But the, having the right team and then procurement will score those recommendations, and then selecting the, those firms that you're going to use. That's really the, the risk. The RFQ itself is a pretty standard document. So I just wanted to let you know that, and that's really what I had to share. So, but since we're going to be here, I mean, if you have any questions on construction auditing, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. So you should know that there's a very prominent member of the Spring community named Debbie Townsend. So we all get a double when they called you. I, I am trying to learn as much about this process as I can, so I, the, one of the things I do when I'm learning is I operationalize terms. And so, I've heard Chief talk about the RFQ process. I would like to hear from our auditor about what the RFQ process is.
So generally, the, you know, the procurement comes up with a form, and then, and that form should be in agreement in accordance with, you know, the state and any school policies. And then, it's basically what they call put out on the street for anybody to answer and respond to. And so, they usually advertise in a number of different locations. I don't know exactly how you guys do it here, but sometimes it's, you know, newspaper, there's a lot of online avenues, you know, the different organizations it goes to, but everybody should have an opportunity to be able to respond to it. And then, there's a date set of when it's due, and then those responses come in. It's all, you know, supposed to be confidential. Those items are then opened, usually in a public area. And so, it, they're opened and then reviewed, and then there's a scoring system that goes on. And then, that's what I'm talking about with the, you have a committee, and the committee is made up of different, you know, a number of different individuals, and you don't want everybody just from construction. It's good to have, you know, people from different areas. And you don't have to be a construction expert to review an RFQ to determine if the person has experience, they've worked at Spring before, they have good track record, you know, you call references, and then you, they score that. And then, it, they have a weighted system. It comes up with kind of a, the highest people. And then, my understanding is they're going to select a pool of architects for the two groupings, you know, under and over $15 million, and then they'll have one architect for the other two projects.
So my understanding is, as I'm coming to grips with this, is among the distinctions between an RFQ and an RFP is, for the RFQ, we're not really talking about prices and fees.
No. If I'm a professional services, you're not allowed to ask for dollars.
That's what I was listening for.
Right.
Okay.
So, and so, so I will say, the RFQ, that's why it's a pretty basic and fundamental document. The RFP, on the other hand, that one's very critical, and it's, it's critical for a lot of different reasons. There's, you know, different information fees, different types of financial information that you want to obtain during that process, and that'll help you better select your shortlist and then interview whatever you're going to do. So that, that's the distinction. And I guess, I mean, I shouldn't just jump to that. The contractors, they also, you can use a two, a two-part system with them and do an RFQ and then have a shortlist and then have them complete an RFP. So it depends on which system that you use.
But the RFQ creates the pool of qualified.
That's right.
Got you. I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do know that the direction from the Board was to select an auditor from the beginning, so thank you for being here. And then, the Board had asked to see that RFQ before it was presented to the public, so I want to make sure we're on track for that because we don't want to delay anything.
Yep. So that's the next little orange one there.
Okay.
What we plan to do is to be able to have several times next week, to be able to have open, open Board sessions for us to be able to review, for the Board to be able to review the RFQs in a secure environment. And so, that's, that's our plan, to be able to provide that, and we'll have several slots so that any Board member that wants to be a part of that would, would be able to do that.
Okay. And then, without any objections from the Board, we'd like to know who is being selected, what that criteria is for the committee.
Right. For the committee, yes.
For the committee. All right. And then, the Board would like to finally approve that committee as well. Is that my understanding from the body? Okay. All right. Is that everything?
Yeah. That's it for Ms. Townsend. I have a couple more slides. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. We appreciate you being here this evening.
So just a couple more slides on, on the details. So along with the architects, we also have professional services that are on the same timeline, and those include things that aren't a part of the architect or the contractor contract, land surveying, geotechnical, civil engineering, traffic. These are all things that we contract directly with the professional services, kind of third-party, if you will, so that they're not working directly for the architects, they work directly for the owner. And then, the last one is, and you, Ms. Townsend mentioned, the RFPs and the, the construction manager at Risk then would go out also, and we believe that that will be able to go out by September. That concludes my update.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Miranda. He has a next item, doesn't he? You can continue with your next item.
I can continue. All right. So my next one, right, will be on page, well, no, I've lost that. What page are we on here? Yeah, this is on page 30. This is on Thursday of last week, we were able to show once again the elementary school boundary adjustments, and one of the things that the Board want us to do is to add another step in our parent and student meetings where we're going to be able to come out and visit the, the homes of the families that are being rezoned. And so, we've added that step into the communication process. Remember, during the month of April, we're concentrating on STAR, but we will ramp that up in May and to really be able to get out to the families and make sure all of our families are aware of the changes that are coming. This one, this item would need a vote from the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the elementary school boundary adjustments as presented by the Administration.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the elementary school boundary adjustments as presented by Administration. Is there any discussion? Okay. I guess, I just have a comment that I'm, I would really like to see us look when we're, when we embark upon boundary changes. I would like to, for us to have done it more holistically in looking at our disrupted, not clear feeder patterns from our middle schools into our high schools and have done it all at, at one time. So that's, that's my comment.
Also, did we request a communications plan as it relates to the boundary changes that we're in, how we're getting that information out to the parents? Did I think, did we request, did they give that to us? All right. All right. Thank you. I'll leave that.
They gave it to us, they did it. We asked them to do some more, they did some more, and they're back again.
I will echo and piggyback on what President Durant just said. We do need to take a more comprehensive look at boundaries from K through 12 in the district, and I think we, the sooner we do that, the, I think, the better for our students.
I think it's going to be an interesting challenge because at middle school and high school levels, the kids are going all over the district because we've become such a district of choice that it's not really in boundaries so much as it is the student interest.
Right. I agree, but I think especially in terms of looking at this through an equity lens, we, we need defined feeder patterns. Again, just looking at this through the lens of equity so that students that are starting at an elementary school can sort of plot their way and then use their choice if they need to, but I think the defined feeder pattern and ones that make sense in terms of the way the boundaries are drawn is important for us to consider.
I didn't say don't do that. I just said that it's going to be very challenging because you can't plan your way through senior high school that way.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? That motion carries. Six, five in favor, one opposed. Mr. Miranda, you can continue.
I have one more. So this is on page 52. This is the discussion of the Districtwide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. We do have a presentation for you in closed session regarding these findings.
Thank you. Our next item is our Board of Trustees Committee's Updates, and so our first committee update will come from Trustee Newhouse for the Board Audit Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee had an opportunity to meet with our auditor, our Board Auditor. We had sent her out on several activities, so I will share with you that we had an opportunity to look at 24 activity funds. They were all competent and in compliant. We looked at attendance roster at two locations, again, in compliance, no problems. Compliance projects, we looked at nine of those in our meeting. Each one of those, I'm happy to report, were completed and competent, and our last one was operational projects. We looked at five of those, no problems, in compliant. We put a pause on the payroll supplemental timesheet audit. We felt that that would needed to be time to complete the position control audit before we move into this. So we put a pause on the payroll supplemental timesheet audit. I'd like to thank you, thank our auditor, our internal auditor, Ms. Patricia Reals. We know we have given her a lot to do in a short amount of time of auditing, but we thank you for your work, and I will say congratulations to her assistant auditor, Marcus Davis. He is graduating with a master's degree on May 15th. So hats off to Mr. Davis. Please share that we are proud of him and appreciate his hard work and working with Ms. Reals in completing all of these audits that the Board is asking her to complete for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And she recently sent out the survey to all of Administration and the individual departments as well as the Board for what areas you would like to see audited next year so we can start to develop our audit plan for the following school year. So if you have not yet completed that survey, if you can do so, we would appreciate it. I believe the deadline is April. What Ms. Reals?
April 14th.
The 14th. All right.
April 14th.
Which is the end of this week. So thank you. Our next committee is our Board Governance Committee, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Deborah Jensen.
Thank you, President Durant. Our Board Governance Committee is going to have a meeting April 17th. In the previous action, we decided not to have a meeting because the changes in our Board policy were due to the Texas Legislature having, sending us directions that this will be on your policy, so we followed that. There was one policy of concern that we wanted to look at a little more, even though the law says we need this policy, we may want to add to the policy, so we're going to look at it. The other thing is, we can take suggestions from the greater community. If you have experienced a problem with a policy in Spring ISD, please contact me because we can certainly examine that policy and deliberate on it. The other thing is, one of the things of Lone Star Governance is the Board needs to evaluate themselves. We do a lot of criticizing and evaluating and praising of other people, and we need to look at ourselves. And the conference we just went to, I went to a session where they recommended having a code of conduct for Board Trustees Members. So let's, we'll look at that and decide what is proper conduct for us. Thankfully, we have a very professional, polite Board. I tell people, we certainly disagree, but we listen to each other and we vote, and then you don't go around saying, well, they voted for such and such, but I don't agree. We don't do that because if you're part of a team, you're going to support your team. The other thing is, we've had a change in our HR department, so we are now resuming our Employee of the Month designations, and so if anybody has somebody that they would like to nominate, please, please nominate who you think is doing an unusually good job as an employee. So that's all I have. President Durant.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen.
I have a question. So is this campus-by-campus Employee of the Month, district Employee of the Month? Is this distinct from?
It's our Board Appreciation Award.
It's.
Yes, but we've, we've been doing it all along.
Okay.
It comes through HR.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've just had a shifting and changing in the HR department, and so we're resuming this now.
Yeah.
And I do want to go ahead and put a plug in for the Board Excellence Award. It can be nominated by anyone, a student, a parent, staff, anyone can recommend an employee that they see going above and beyond in their role of responsibility to the Board for that recognition. And so, take that opportunity to recognize those colleagues when you see them doing an excellent job. Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Our next committee is the Equity Committee, and I'll ask the Chair of that Committee, Winford Adams.
So, President Durant, we did not meet, we were supposed to meet this past Monday, and we were traveling back from the conference, and so we have not met since our last update.
Okay. Well, look forward to your update next month. I'll now like to ask Trustee Hodges, who chairs our Board Community Engagement Committee, for her update this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. As reported last month, the Committee, the Community Engagement Committee has been working hard, and we have compiled and reviewed the data from our building bridges and table talks. So we now have the last report, and so this month, when we meet, we'll review that information and move forward with recommendations to our super proud Superintendent for consideration and implementation. And there were some hot topics, and so we have drilled down on a few and look forward to working with the leadership on identifying next steps and making a few of the recommended changes. And some of those, you know, as you know, in anything, some of those changes can be made immediately, others will, will take some time. And so, we, the Committee will work in tandem with the leadership to see those to fruition. Also, as mentioned, we talked a little bit about the 88th Legislature, and when I was sitting here, I was thinking that we, one of the things that I am going to pose to the Committee is that we work to have voter education and voter registration at all of our community events. And so, I know one of the things that we've done in the past And so I know one of the things that we've done in the past through my sorority, Alpha Capital Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Omicron Tau Omega Chapter, we've come to different events and register particularly our students that are of age or will be of voting age. So I think that's something we definitely want to reinstitute, if that's possible, and then also have an education piece with that. And then possibly moving forward, having some advocacy piece because having an advocacy component, because as board members, as mentioned, we had a, a person that spoke today about some of the things that's going on in the legislature. And it's just good for, I think, our students to be aware and definitely our parents. And I think as a, as a school district, we can definitely help provide some of the education that's needed so that we can, you know, be informed and our community can be informed when they go to the polls to vote on a particular topic. So I'm, I'm looking forward to possibly implementing that moving forward with some of the community events that we have coming up. Speaking of community events, we talked about the Boys Summit on the 22nd, so make sure you register for that. And then also on April 20th, we have a volunteer appreciation that's open to the public as well. And I encourage you to go to our website. We just honored our communications team, and they do a great job with our website in keeping information up to date on that. So all of our events are on the website. So we would, I encourage you all to take a look at the website and the calendar at least, you know, once a week and pick something to attend, and then also bring a neighbor, you know? So again, thank you to the community, parents and stakeholders for supporting Spring ISD. Madam President, that concludes the Community Engagement Committee report for the month of April.
Thank you, Trustee Newhouse and the Trustee Hodges. Any questions?
A long list of really good ideas you've come up with is this idea of educating the community around the legislative process. I know we have teacs on social studies and, but I, I know that we don't do a good job in the state of educating students about how the sausage is made in Austin. And there are different organizations, I don't know if you're familiar with Boys State and Girls State, that actually teach high school kids, actually let them go up and practice a session. But if you've ever watched the committees and the sessions, it's, it, there's a lot of inside baseball that a, a high school diploma doesn't prepare you for. And so anything we can do to educate our students and our broader community about what's really happening in Austin, you've seen what happened in Tennessee over the past couple of weeks. That happens because people are disengaged from this system, and we're really focused on national issues. When what really impacts your life is what's happening in your state capital, wherever you are in this country. So I, I really like that idea. If you need help from me, let me know.
Thank, thank you, thank you both. So our next item this evening is the Consent Agenda. And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items that are listed on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the items listed on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? We covered them thoroughly on Thursday. All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We're really done. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, they're all in shock, Texas 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.0821. Now, voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in the open session, and the time is now 8:16 PM. Good evening, everyone. We will now reconvene the open session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 10:38 PM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to non-renew the contract of Norman Brown as presented in closed session and to authorize a superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Jensen and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that the final order to non-renew the contract of Norman Brown as presented in closed session and to authorize a superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of the contract term, the probationary contract of Derek Beck as presented in closed session and to authorize a superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract term, the probationary contracts at the end of the contract term, the probationary contract of Derek Boick as presented in closed session and to authorize a superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion also carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn for tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Adams that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Although, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. We adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:40 PM.